House will come to order. Members, please take your seats. Sergeant at arms.
The house is now in session. All persons not entitled to the privilege of the floor, please retire to the gallery.
The members will rise and be led in prayer by Reverend Dr. Barbara Heck, Bush Hill Presbyterian Church Alexandria, and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which will be led by the delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
First of all, let me smile ridiculously to see all of you and to give you thanks for your service. Not an easy task in these days. Would you join me in breathing in? And breathing out? Oh, good and gracious God, we give you thanks, you who give us each breath which gives us life and is our reminder that you are as close as our breath. Your Spirit hovering now over us as you hovered over creation at the beginning of time. Breathing in. Breathing out. We in positions of privilege and power make ourselves humble before you. Untameable power who is greater than any one of us and always worthy of respect and praise. Like a father, like a mother, like our dearest friend, you care for each and every human being in this Commonwealth. In sovereign love, you create the world as good and make everyone equally in your sight, male and female, of every race and every people, amazingly, to live in one community. You teach us. You show us how to love our neighbor as you love us and we love you. Breathing in. Breathing out. We who are invested with authority, power given to us by our energy, intelligence, imagination, and love, power given to us by our people and our sacred texts, guide these lawmakers, public servants, to make the most excellent decisions as they exercise their conscience, not their cynicism, as they work together. This day, we pray especially for one at Bush Hill Presbyterian Church who was shot a year ago and almost died. A strong teenager now rendered a quadriplegic, his body riddled with pain and bed sores while his mind, his floating head struggles to find meaning and purpose in the life that is ahead for him. Lord, you know the suffering is so intense and the demands on the family and the healthcare system so huge and the needs, Lord, are never-ending. All this, and the teenager who so easily got a gun, who so easily shot him, and who so easily remains free, is not accountable for this debilitating action. Lord, have mercy on all people, including us impacted by the trauma of gun violence as it ripples through our communities and we all suffer. Let not these lawmakers think they are each so important that they need not consider your bigger vision and the longer-term gains. Help them to trust that humility makes for better decisions. Give them big visions to find shared solutions that bring more justice and more joy to our people. And finally, Lord, in a country that is riveted by a spirit of revenge, in communities that can't seem to help but nurse unending resentments, and in a nation so divided by polarization that we can't even reason things out, give each one of the leaders in this room deep courage to lead, to lead away from cynical fear and spiraling tribalism that destroy us, and lead us toward a gracious faith, and even love, oh God of love, that connects differing parts to work together as one body, as you will us to do, working always and every day for the well-being of every Virginia and indeed for all humankind. As Jesus Christ guides my life, so I pray. Amen.
Amen. The members will answer the roll call by indicating their presence on the electronic voting board.
The clerk will close the roll.
Mr. Speaker, a quorum is present.
Pursuant to House Rule Three, I have examined and approved the Journal of the House of Delegates for January 22, 2024. Motion's of resolutions under Rule Thirty-nine pursuant to the provisions of Rule Forty are now in order. Does the clerk have any announcements or communications?
No announcements or communications. Accordingly, Mr. Speaker, in this first portion of the morning, our speaker requests you use your request to speak button for those agenda items listed on the voting board for reference.
The delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for an announcement.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to announce our good friend and colleague who used to serve in this body from 2012 to 2018, representing the city of Norfolk, the area in which I now have the pleasure of representing. Former delegate and current city treasurer, Don Hester, is here with us today. I appreciate former Delegate Hester. She has been a mentor to me, and I am proud to call her friend. And I hope it is the pleasure of this body to give her another warm house welcome back to this chamber.
Welcome, Delegate Hester. The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sickles.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise this morning for an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Joining us this morning for the invocation is the Reverend Dr. Barbara Heck. She came to Bush Hill Presbyterian Church, which is not in Alexandria, although that's our address. It's in Franconia, for just the people who want to be specific, from the First Presbyterian Church in Hightstown, New Jersey. Before becoming the interim pastor at Hightstown, Barbara built up and led a successful campus ministry program at Rutgers University, Occidental College, and at Cornell. In between, she served as solo pastor at two churches in Toronto, Canada. Barbara served for five years as a moderator of Presbyterian ministries in higher education and received the Campus Ministry of the Year Award from National Campus Ministry Association in 2012. She received her Master's of Divinity in 1988 at McCormick Theological Seminary, eventually getting her doctorate nearby us at Wesley Theological Seminary. She is a very important part of our community in Franconia, and I thank her for coming today, and I hope the body will give her a warm welcome. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend Heck. The delegate from Roanoke, Delegate McNamara.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker and ladies and gentlemen of the House, today in the gallery, we have the Airbnb hosts from across the Commonwealth in town for their first lobby day, if they could stand. These folks have spent the morning visiting the Capitol, talking to members of the House and Senate, and sharing the part they are playing in the growth of citizen-led tourism in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Last year, Virginia Airbnb hosts opened their homes to more than 1 million guests, and more than a third of those indicated that without Airbnb, they might not visit the part of Virginia they did. A significant number of our hosts are small business owners, artists, educators, individuals affected by the pandemic, and two out of three self-report as women. Two out of five hosts say the income they received helped them stay in their houses, and Airbnb has provided a financial lifeline for many as well as making Virginia more accessible to tourists. Please join me in welcoming our Virginia Airbnb hosts to the Virginia House of Delegates. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Delegate from Loudoun, Delegate Reed.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I rise for the purposes of an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today, we welcome the members of the Loudoun County School Board who were recently sworn in on Tuesday, January 2. If they could please rise. Mr. Speaker, based upon legislation that this body passed in 2021 and 2022, these school Board members will now, for the first time, serve in stagger terms ensuring a continuity of institutional knowledge. The school board's representatives from Algonquin, Broad Run, Dulles, Leesburg, and Sterling districts will serve two-year terms, while the remaining four members will serve four-year terms. Just for everyone's point of reference, the Loudoun County Public School System is the third-largest school system in the Commonwealth, serving about 82,000 students across 98 schools, and is ranked as the fifth-best school system in the Commonwealth. And I can personally attest to that because both of my daughters went there for elementary, middle school, and high school, and still call Loudoun County home. Thanks to the Loudoun County School Board members for joining us today, your advocacy and leadership for our youth, and I hope it'll be the pleasure of the house to give them a warm house welcome.
Welcome. Welcome to the Capitol today. The delegate from Sussex County, Delegate Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for an announcement.
The delegate has the floor.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I have an important announcement. Our Commonwealth and our nation is full of history, tradition, conflict, and prevailing over conflict. Late in the cover of night, some of our soldiers from the 83rd District will be coming to the General Assembly Building with fire and iron. Yes, it is that time again, that conflict that we resolved when in the 2002 session, the good statesman from Lunenburg got us to sign HGIR Resolution Number Two, which actually finally resolved the issue, is Brunswick, Virginia or Brunswick, Georgia, the home of the Brunswick stew?
No.
We will be having Brunswick Stew Day tomorrow at the General Assembly Building. The team from Brunswick will be here, led by the winner of the Taste of Brunswick, Brunswick stew master Jonathan Lee Brown. They will be cooking Brunswick stew all night. It'll be ready to serve tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock. I do hope that you can stop by, meet with them, grab a bowl of stew, and if you so desire, I expect that we've got some experts in here that are really great at stewing the pot. Thank you.
Thank you. The delegate from Stafford, Delegate Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for two introductions.
The delegate has the floor.
Joining us on the floor today, we have my Congresswoman, representing the Seventh Congressional District of Virginia, Congresswoman Abigail Spamberger, who has been representing the Seventh District since 2018, and we're excited to have her here. I would ask that the House give her a warm house welcome.
Welcome, Congresswoman. Welcome. The delegate from Loudoun, Delegate Higgins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to announce a group in the gallery today that has also been in the, over in our office building, working with us, the Treasurers Association of Virginia. I'd ask those members to please stand and be recognized. I know those folks do a heck of a job keeping our local jurisdictions in trouble, or out of trouble, I should say, and my mother said that you should always recognize those that control the money, so I'm here to make sure that's done today. Please give them a warm house round of applause and welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, Treasurers. Welcome, Treasurers. And I paid my taxes already, so leave me alone. Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Glass.
Gratitude, Mr. Speaker. I rise for the purposes of an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
Gratitude, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, a creative adult is a child who survives. I'd like to introduce to you the creatives on the Capitol, if they would still rise, if they would rise. This dynamic group of individuals have converged onto the Capitol today to advocate for the advancement of the creative economy. I imagine these folks would say to us that they are not merely businessmen, but they are businessmen. These passionate individuals view themselves as entrepreneurs within the creative industry and are ready to handle their businesses to drive innovation across the Commonwealth. I would ask the body to give the creatives on the Capitol a warm house welcome.
Thank you, and welcome to the Capitol. The delegate from Prince William, Delegate Mundon King.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today, I believe, if they are here, we have the dedicated domestic workers representing Care and Action. If they are in the chamber, please stand. Care and Action serves as the policy and advocacy stronghold for women in caregiving roles. These dedicated workers work tirelessly for the well-being of over 2 million domestic workers. In Virginia alone, there are 60,000 individuals engaged in domestic work. This sector, a vital component of our economy, is unfortunately undervalued and susceptible to abuse. Notably dominated by women of color, particularly immigrants, domestic workers face a stark reality. But thanks to many members in this body, their future is looking brighter every day. Mr. Speaker, I am the proud descendant of a domestic worker, and I am so honored to see these advocates here today, so I'd ask my colleagues to give them a warm house welcome.
Thank you, and welcome to the Capitol today. The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Bolivar.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Rise for an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, I'm very pleased to introduce a group of citizen advocates from around the Commonwealth who have come down here today to participate in Virginia's Second Democracy Day, and if they could go ahead and please rise in the gallery. These citizens are here to urge us to support legislation that makes our government more responsive to and reflective of everyday Virginians. They believe that in order to seriously address the issues facing our society, we need to change the way our state government works. One of their main priorities this year is campaign finance reform, including legislation to restrict personal use of campaign funds, enhancing disclosure of independent expenditures, and enacting campaign contribution limits. They are also here to encourage legislators to support ethics reform, ranked choice voting, and protecting voting rights. Mr. Speaker, the groups participating in today's Democracy Day include Big Money Out Virginia, the League of Women Voters, Common Cause Represent Us, Opvea, and Veterans for All Voters, and many other groups. I hope that we will give the more than 100 citizen advocates who came down today a warm house welcome.
Thank you, and welcome to the Capitol. The delegate from Newport News, Delegate Price.
Mr. Speaker, I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. Today in the gallery, we have with us representatives from the Lead Peninsula Program, if they will please stand. It's been running since 1984 and is an intensive 10-month community and civic immersion program that provides local community members with a comprehensive behind-the-scenes look at how the peninsula runs. Lead Peninsula also works to foster better communication and cooperation opportunities between the private, public, and nonprofit sectors as their participants engage in educational sessions, tours, and candid conversations with community leaders. It's a valuable tool for developing future community, business, and political leaders on the peninsula. As we welcome them to the Capitol today, Mr. Speaker and members, I ask that we would give them a warm house welcome.
Thank you, and welcome to the Capitol. The delegate from Stafford, Delegate Cole. Thank you, and welcome to the Capitol. The delegate from Stafford, Delegate Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I rise for yet another introduction.
Of course you do. The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Joining us in the gallery are members from Fredericksburg City Public Schools, and I would ask that they are there to please rise. Fredericksburg City Public Schools are working diligently to educate our city's young scholars. They are champions for our students, and they are here today actively pursuing increased literacy, increased teacher pay, and advancing CT opportunities and programs to prepare students for their future careers. I ask that the House would give them a warm welcome. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Welcome, welcome to the Capitol today. The delegate from Arlington, Delegate Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for an introduction, Mr. Speaker.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Members of the House, today we're being visited in our offices by the amazing leaders of a truly groundbreaking and important organization in the Commonwealth of Virginia, the Virginia Coalition of Latino Organizations, BACALAU. I hope that they were in the line, but I hope they're in the gallery right now. If they are, if they please stand. They're here visiting our offices on their annual Latino and immigrant advocacy day. BACALAU's mission is to foster a collaborative alliance among organizations in Virginia dedicated to serving and advocating for the interests of Latino communities. BACALAU strives to empower our community by actively working towards achieving equitable treatment, equal opportunities, and ensuring fair representation for Latinos across the Commonwealth. Through unity and proactive engagement, they seek to create a vibrant and inclusive community that uplifts and enhances the well-being of all Virginians. The major partner organizations of BACALAU are a who's who of Latino advocacy over the past several decades. They include the Commonwealth Institute, the Virginia Coalition of Immigrant Rights, the Legal Aid Justice Center, the Virginia Latino Leaders Council, the Virginia Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, EduFuturo, LULAC, Virginia, and the Dreamers Mothers in America in Action. I hope we can give them a warm House welcome.
The delegate from York, Delegate Green.
Rise for the purpose of an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you. Today, we're very fortunate to have our Commissioner of Revenues here, if they could stand up, from York, Smith, and Washington. Yes, thank you, thanks for being here. I want to offer you a warm House welcome.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Mr. Speaker, I rise for the purposes of an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, joining us today here on Capitol Square and perhaps in the gallery, and if they're in the gallery, I would ask them to rise, we are joined by visitors from the Virginia Emergency Management Association. They're here for, like a lot of others, they're here for their annual Lobby Day. Virginia's emergency managers play a crucial role in disaster preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation. These professionals are responsible for conducting risk assessments, coordinating emergency response efforts, managing resources, and collaborating with various stakeholders. Emergency managers also play a key role in educating the community about disaster preparedness, organizing drills and exercises, and ensuring that response plans are in place to address a wide range of potential crises, from natural disasters like flooding and severe weather, to human-caused hazards such as acts of violence or public health incidents. Our goal is to safeguard our communities during times of crisis while enhancing resilience against future threats. VIMA's membership is made up of emergency management professionals from local, state, and federal government agencies, institutes of higher education, tribes, and the military, private nonprofit and volunteer organizations, and individuals interested in emergency management. I would note that during the pandemic, one of our visitors spent six months, this wasn't uncommon, his was sort of common, spent six months working in the Emergency Preparedness Center without being able to take a single day off, right? So these folks are there when we need them. They're there to make sure our communities are ready for whatever's happening next. They emerge themselves every, all the time, preparing for the worst but hoping for the best. I hope it will be the pleasure of the House to give them a warm House welcome.
Thank you, and welcome to the Capitol. Pursuant to House Rule 30, the Journal shall reflect that the following members are away on pressing personal business on our granted leave from today's session, Delegates Austin and Reza. The clerk will announce the next order of business.
The second portion of the morning hour, Mr. Speaker, is reserved for announcement of member requests to move legislation for any uncontested calendar, the regular calendar. There is one. It's not on a live portion of the calendar today, but under the category of House Bill's first reading uncontested, Delegate Martinez, House Bill Five will go from the uncontested over to the regular calendar.
The clerk will announce the next order of business.
Third portion of the morning hour, member requests for legislation to go by for the day, and as such, the subsequent motion by the Majority Leader to effectuate that action. There is one on page six of the printed calendar in the category. Online is House Bill Second Reading Regular, Delegate Cherry's, House Bill 291, that's requested to go by for the day.
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I move that the legislation as reported by the clerk go by for the day.
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring moves that the House bill announced be passed by for the day. All those in favor say aye. Those oppose, the motion carries. The clerk will announce the next order of business.
And, Mr. Speaker, the fourth and final portion of the morning hour, reserved for member requests for points of personal privilege.
The delegate from Hampton, Delegate Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise for a point of personal privilege.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, members of the House, yesterday I spoke to you a little bit about my life with multiple sclerosis, but what I didn't tell you is that MS has some other side effects. Some of the medication that we have to take also could cause your immune system to weaken, so we're likely to catch other diseases. And that is exactly what happened to me this summer. I don't think any of you in here know this, but as I waited for the last day to find out if anyone was running against me in the general election, I received two different calls. One of them was to let me know that this summer I was going to have two opponents working against me, and one of them was breast cancer. I couldn't believe it. Why me? Why me? I had an election to win this year. So the first thing I had to do was to call my then Minority Leader, who's now our House Speaker, Delegate Don Scott, and I told him, and I told him we're going to keep it quiet, because the last thing I needed out there on that campaign trail was for people to say, well, you know she has cancer. She can't win. But the Speaker told me, don't worry about a thing. All I want you to do is take care of yourself and get well. And that's exactly what I tried to do, was to take care of myself, and it remained a secret, except with one other confidant that helped me get through this whole thing. But, you know, as I went on and I learned more and more about this cancer, I learned that women of color usually get cancer, and it's more aggressive. I also learned that 40% of them die more often than any other woman. And so I knew it was serious. Even when I went to see my surgeon, who was wonderful, I saw many different, I had second opinions, third opinions, all of them. And they all said, Ms. Ward, you did everything correct. Because, see, I was doing what we were always told to do, do those regular breast self-exams. And as long as you're doing them, we'll know. You'll get a good idea. But I'm going to tell you that that cancer is a tricky little thing, because no one could feel a single thing on me. No one could. All tests couldn't feel anything, but there it was. It was there and it's hiding, and it's just waiting for the opportunity for you to say, I got an election to win, or I need to go on vacation. Go in there and get that mammogram every single year. 2022, nothing. 2023, there it was. And so, without saying anything and going through radiation, I went through everything, not sharing anything with anyone. So why today? Because I know that what I am saying today is going to help somebody. And that's why I decided to stand up and speak today. You have loved ones, you have daughters, you have cousins. And also, I want you to know, as I went in and out for radiation, there was also a man going in for radiation also. So don't think that men are always safe and protected from breast cancer. So as I look out at you, and I don't know who I'm talking to, but deep in my soul, I knew I had to speak, and no one in this caucus hardly knew I had breast cancer. But although I told you all yesterday that I was an MS warrior, today I tell you I'm a breast cancer survivor also. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
And that's why we love her. The delegate from Newport News, Delegate Simons.
Mr. Speaker, may we return to the morning hour for a brief introduction?
The delegate has the floor, first morning hour.
Thank you so much. I'm very moved by Delegate Ward, and I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that today is Breast Cancer Awareness Day in the Capitol, and we do have representatives in the gallery, if they could please stand. We have the Virginia Breast Cancer Foundation working together with Susan G. Komen on breast cancer awareness today. So thank you for being here in the Capitol, and thank you, this is a disease that touches everyone's lives, so thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to the Capitol. The clerk will call a calendar.
Calendar for today for the Virginia House of Delegates this Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024. First category for action is the House Bills on Third Reading Uncontested Calendar. Mr. Speaker, there are four bills in the block for the uncontested. They are House Bills 25, on page two of the printed calendar, House Bill 66, House Bill 98, and House Bill 168, complete the block.
The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes. 98, no zero.
Ayes, 98, no zero. The bills passes.
Continuing with the calendar, next category, House Bills on Third Reading Regular Calendar, House Bill's Third Reading Regular, top of page three. Two bills in this category, beginning with House Bill 166, relating to the Department of Education, guidance and resources, composting programs, and local school divisions.
The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes. 58, knows 40.
Ayes, 58, knows 40. The bill passes.
And House Bill 258, relating to nonjudicial sales of tax delinquent real properties, unimproved properties within urban redevelopment or redevelopment zones.
Shall the bill pass?
Mr.?
Destroy the roll. The delegate from Buckingham.
Mr. Speaker, I'd ask if the patron would yield for a question?
Not on third read. You can speak to the bill only.
Check that. I hadn't done this for a while. Mr. Speaker, I'd ask if I could speak to the bill?
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. It's my understanding that in Washington, often bills are named purportedly for what they do. To be ecumenical, I'll take one from either side of the aisle, the Affordable Care Act, or No Child Left Behind. If I were to name this bill, I would name it the Making It Easier for Governments to Take Property and Inheritance from People of Color Act. What this bill does is it targets Newport News, and it says, we're going to streamline the takings process, we're going to streamline the takings process for people who are delinquent on their taxes. Well, I am here to inform you that the minority property ownership rate in Newport News is approximately 10, I'm sorry, two and a half times higher than it is statewide. In fact, Newport News, Virginia, is a majority-minority community. And what a nonjudicial taking is, is taking the judicial process through which we can test takings by the government of private property held by individuals, a way to streamline the government taking property from people. And the likelihood, again, of people in traditionally socio-economically disadvantaged communities owning property in Newport News is approximately 2.5 times greater in Newport News than it is statewide. But why carry the bill? I've heard $40,000 isn't that much money. Well, the bill started out at $25,000, now it's got to go up to $40,000. I've heard this makes it easier on our local government officials, it makes it easier on our treasurers. I've heard this bill passed in 2004, we're just amending it. I've heard, hey, this bill helps real estate developers. It isn't our job to represent government and make their job easier. Our job is to defend freedom, to defend property, to defend that which was earned by previous generations, to be bequeathed to our children. And so people will say, but Garrett, you don't represent Newport News. No, I don't, but I represent Virginians, and I represent the Constitution, to which I took an oath, and the Bill of Rights there too. So I know what the outcome will be in this process, but it also isn't our jobs to tell working-class Virginians what is and isn't a lot of money. $40,000 isn't that much money? It isn't our job to look out for real estate developers who are looking to gentrify downtown Newport News. It's our job to stand up for the people of Virginia who work every day to give something to their children. Ladies and gentlemen, our citizens don't care what bill passed in 2004, they care what bill we passed today. I'm not sure about the Patrons District, I hadn't spent a lot of time in Newport News, but in Dillon, $40,000 might be the difference between sending a kid to college or not. In Dillon, $40,000 might be the difference between visiting a dying relative out of state. In my district, in Appomattox, $40,000 might be the difference between a single mom and childcare. So, I understand what's going to happen here, but I also understand that just because we like our treasurers and our constitutional officers, and they come to us and say, it's really hard to take properties with delinquent taxes, that the answer isn't to make it easier, it's to find the people who are the heirs, not of these deadbeat taxpayers, but of these dead taxpayers, so that we don't take that $40,000 of hope away from the people in our most vulnerable communities. With that, Mr. Speaker, I thank you, and I ask the body to consider the ramifications of the bill on taxpaying Virginians, not just on government officials who want to make it easier to take the hard-earned property of our working-class Virginians.
The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes. 76, knows 22.
Ayes, 76, knows 22. The bill passes.
Mr. Speaker, continuing with today's calendar, next category, House Bills on Second Reading Uncontested Calendar, four bills in the uncontested calendar, beginning with House Bill 123, it seeks to amend and reinact sections code of Virginia relating to health insurance, ethics and fairness in carrier business practices, those for committee on labor and commerce with an amendment to a true substitute.
Shall the substitute be accepted? Oh, you know, oh, somebody needs to move it. I'm sorry, the delegate from, you didn't hit your button. The delegate from Fairfax who doesn't hit his button, Delegate Sullivan. Delegate Sullivan. Just supposed to know who he is.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move the substitute.
Thank you. Shall the substitute be adopted? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker and ladies and gentlemen of the House, HB 123 is the result of a work group, a task force, that this body created with some legislation last session. And that task force provided comprehensive recommendations, streamlining and accelerating for billing and payment practice standards in the healthcare industry. I'm pleased to say that came to a conclusion and peace in the valley. And HB 123 will do, in fact, that. Streamline and accelerate billing in the healthcare industry. I hope it'll be the pleasure of this body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Continuing with the uncontested block, turning to page 4 of the printed calendar. Next up is House Bill 242. It seeks to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to the Virginia Public Procurement Act, competitive negotiation, exceptions to contractual terms. Bill's report committee on general laws with an amendment.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Bolivar.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move the committee amendment.
Shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor, say aye.
Aye!
All opposed, no. Committee amendment carries.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill 242 is a recommendation of the Public Body Procurement Work Group. The bill addresses the process by which a vendor may ask a public body to consider changes to terms and conditions when responding to a request for proposal. So typically, when an agency sends out an RFP, a potential vendor is asked whether they desire any changes to terms and conditions. And those terms and conditions are discussed if the vendor is then shortlisted. However, there's been a trend in agencies that have started to actually score up or down based on whether somebody is making a request for those terms and condition changes. So what that does is two things. It puts a chilling effect on suggesting changes to terms and conditions that could actually be beneficial to the Commonwealth. And then second, it also can result in the best-qualified vendor actually losing to a less-qualified vendor just for asking for consideration of changes in terms and conditions. So the work group put together a group that evaluated best practices, and their recommendation was to allow agencies to be permitted to continue to request exceptions to terms and conditions upfront, but they should not be considered in scoring the proposal. House Bill 242 implements those recommendations. And, Mr. Speaker, I would move that we engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
And finally, in the uncontested second-reading block is House Bill 592, which would direct the, direct that certain Department of Health emergency regulations related to prescription jug price transparency remain in effect until final regulations are promulgated. Bill has emergency clause in its report committee on health and human services.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sickles.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This little bill just affects the transparency bill that we passed a couple of years ago, 99 to 1. The temporary regulations have expired. And so this bill just keeps them in effect until the permanent regulations can be implemented. So I hope it's the pleasure of the House to engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
My apologies, sir. One more bill in the block, top of page 5. Uncontested second reading is House Bill 729. It seeks to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to long-term care services and support screening PACE program. Bill's report committee on health and human services with amendment in nature of substitute.
The delegate from Fairfax.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This bill allows the PACE program, which is a program that helps keep senior citizens in their home and their community, and allows the people that operate PACE in your neighborhood to be able to, in certain circumstances, address the screening program that allows seniors to be accepted into our long-term support LTSS, or Long-Term Care in Virginia. So that's all the bill does, and I hope it'll be the pleasure of the House to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
I think you have a substitute.
Mr. Chairman, I move the substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. The substitute is agreed to.
Mr. Chairman, I would hope that the body will engross the substitute and move it on to its third reading.
All those in... Shall the bills be engrossed and passed on to the third reading? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion carries.
Mr. Speaker, next category, page 5 of the printed calendar. House Bills on Second-Reading Regular Calendar. First up is House Bill 114. It seeks to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to the Virginia Health Insurance Reform Commission membership. The bill's report committee on labor and commerce.
The delegate from Parton, Delegate Ware. Good to see you again, too, today, sir.
Thank you. Good to be with you. I can tell you, it's good to be back. House Bill 114 is a very simple bill that, at the unanimous request of the longstanding Health Insurance Reform Commission, asks that we add one member from the House and one member from the Senate to its membership going forward. I would note that, as many of you know, we have a longstanding protocol in the House of Delegates that there be more members from the House than from the Senate. There continues to remain proportionally a larger share from the House than from the Senate, both before and after this bill. And I hope it'll be the pleasure of the House to pass the bill.
Shall the bill be engrossed? Nope, this is not, this, yeah. Shall the bill be engrossed? You want the bill to be engrossed, right? Okay. Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Mr. Speaker, bottom of page 5, House Bill 157. It seeks to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to minimum wage. Farm laborers or farm employees, temporary foreign workers. The bill's report committee on labor and commerce with an amendment in the nature of a substitute.
Delegate from Arlington, Delegate McClure.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the House adopt the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be adopted? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. Substitute is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. House Bill 157 removes the farmworker exemption and the temporary foreign worker exemption from the Virginia Minimum Wage Act. Just a reminder that we passed this measure out of this body when the delegate from Hampton carried it. When we passed the Virginia Minimum Wage Act, we left behind the hard-working people who put food on all of our tables. Under our current law, farmworkers on large farms are only covered by the federal minimum wage at 7.25 an hour. And farmworkers on small farms are excluded from the federal minimum wage protection, meaning that it is legal for employers to pay farmworkers below 7.25 per hour. And, as it's been mentioned many times on this floor, the farmworker exemption is a relic of the Jim Crow era, and it is my hope that we work together to join the other states to finally remove this discriminatory relic from our books. And, Mr. Speaker, I move that the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
The delegate from Rockingham, Delegate Wilk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Would the delegate yield for a question?
Would the delegate yield for a question?
Mr. Speaker, I yield.
Delegate will yield.
Mr. Speaker, I would ask the delegate, when her presentation during the committee, she made a statement that she had talked to farmers, and that farmers said, "Hey, we're already paying these kind of wages anyhow." And so my question, Mr. Speaker, would be, was any of the farmers that the delegate talked to, were they explicitly in favor of her legislation?
Mr. Speaker, I would say to the delegate that there were a variety of different comments on this. I know there's been a lot of fear-mongering around it. And I know that there is a particular perspective from a small farmer who specifically said to me, and I quote, "I do not know a single small farmer who would dream of paying their people below the minimum wage, and we should remove these exclusions to make it fair for the rest of us, who are paying workers fair wages. Small farmers know that they work incredibly hard, and they know the value of hard work." End quote. These perspectives and these voices of small farmers who support this measure are often drowned out by the fear-mongering, not supported or backed by labor data.
Follow-up question, Mr. Speaker?
Would the delegate yield?
Mr. Speaker, I yield.
Delegate will yield.
Mr. Speaker, I would ask the delegate, so these farmers that, you know, inquiry was made of, how many of those farmers, or any of them, were in the delegate's district?
Mr. Speaker, I would say to the delegate that it doesn't matter where these small farmers are. The fact of the matter is, and the point is, that there are a lot of outliers of folks who pay below the minimum wage on the state and federal level. And it is currently legal in our books. That is the point of this. A lot of folks have already said that they're paying the minimum wage, small farmers and large farmers, on average, and according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics. So the point of the matter is that these are, this bill simply addresses those outliers that are not paying the folks the wages that they deserve, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. The delegate from Macamack, Delegate Bloxham.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Would the delegate yield for a question?
Would the delegate yield for a question?
Mr. Speaker, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I guess my question isn't so much as to the wage, but as to how it affects overtime. I know that most of my fellows on the shore are making the $15 or better, and they're working about 80 hours a week. And I'm afraid that if you go to overtime, that some of those hours are actually going to be cut. So I didn't know how this bill would affect the overtime.
Mr. Speaker, I would say to the delegate that this bill does not address overtime. In other states, they do. And there has not been a widespread small farm shutdown. But this bill does not address overtime and does not touch it.
The delegate from Rockingham, Delegate Runyon.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would like to speak to the bill at the appropriate time.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Our wonderful food today, Mr. Speaker, and fellow colleagues does not magically appear back here in the members' lounge. It doesn't originate in the grocery store or anywhere other than the farm. It comes to us with the cooperation and hard work of farmers and farmworkers, and a legion of others. It starts with the farmer and his team working together to feed our friends and neighbors, our folks in the Commonwealth, and beyond us throughout the world. These farmers themselves often work two jobs to keep their farms going. And they're our heroes here today. We do not need to step in between the farmers and the folks that work with them, their team members, and interfere with this process. Family farmers are struggling to stay on the land. We continue to lose farms in my district and throughout the Commonwealth. High inflation, development pressures from an increasing population, and widely fluctuating commodity prices make it pretty tough to make a living on the family farm today. Creating a wage structure that does not reflect the commodity pricing nature of food production is a bad economic policy. And it will lead to our farmers having an unaffordable, unaffordable environment, forcing them to leave their homes and their families and their farms. Small farmers will be decimated economically in the wholesome way of life that these farmers and their families have enjoyed and treasured for generations are going to disappear. Mr. Speaker, when efforts to make life better for someone winds up making everyone worse off, we're not moving in the best direction of the Commonwealth. There are no winners in this bill. I humbly suggest to my colleagues to look for and to find and acknowledge the true value of the contributions our family farmers provide to our Commonwealth. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. The delegate from Culpeper, Delegate Freitas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Speaking of the bill?
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. There's obviously been a lot of debate over the concept of minimum wage. And a lot of times, when those of us on this side of the aisle get up to speak about it, I think the impression is is that we're only worried about the impact on the employer. And we certainly are worried about that impact. They're the ones providing the vast majority of opportunities for people to actually move up the economic ladder. But for many of us, we're also speaking from the perspective of somebody that's actually worked for minimum wage. I've worked for minimum wage. And when I did, it was an entry-level position. And it was somewhere where I didn't have a lot of experience, and I didn't have a lot of skill sets. And essentially, my employer was taking a risk on me by hiring me. And I was thankful to have the job, not just for the pay that I actually received from it, but the actual work experience that I was getting, so that I could actually make my labor more competitive in the market moving forward. And what we've seen, and study after study from an economic perspective, is that when we drastically increase the minimum wage, which this will effectively do, we are usually impacting youth unemployment. We're making it harder for people to break into the economic market at a time when they desperately need to be able to do so. And so it needs to be understood that we're not operating from a standpoint of fear-mongering when we talk about the potential problems with respect to what this is going to mean for entry-level employees. We're not fear-mongering when we stand up for small farmers that are telling us that this is going to have a significant burden with respect to their labor costs. And we're not fear-mongering when we say when people go into the grocery store, and they already look at inflated prices because of bad monetary policy at the federal level, and now, because of unforced errors at state policy level. That's not fear-mongering. That's not just sticking up for the big guys. That's just not as sticking up for the employers. That's a lot of us speaking from experience, and we know exactly what it's like to not only be that laborer, to be that person that walks in the grocery store increasingly nowadays, and realize that the prices are far higher than we anticipated, and our grocery budgets are just not keeping up. But one of the things I really want to address here, because there was a comment made in the subcommittee discussion about this, or maybe it was the full committee discussion, but it centered around this idea that, well, if farmers can't do the math, then maybe they should essentially go out of business and stop exploiting workers. I realize that many of the people on the other side of the aisle do not represent districts where there is a significant number of farms where people engage in agriculture. I represent a district where I have people that have been farming the same small farm for generations. They've gone through drought, they've gone through pestilence, they've gone through war, they've gone through depressions. And they've survived all of it. Because they're incredibly hearty and hard-working people. It's amazing to me that eventually some of them might actually lose their farms, because we're losing more every day. Not because of all of the prior challenges that I just described, but quite frankly, what can be chalked up to is the arrogance of a politician that would honestly state that if you can't do it the way I think you should do it, even though I have no practical experience with it, well, then maybe you shouldn't exist. I want to remind this body, there's only one entity in the Commonwealth of Virginia that still possesses the ability to steal from labor that which it has earned. And it's not farmers, it's us. We have the ability to confiscate. We have the ability to tax. We have the ability to take. Farmers and employers, employees, they still have to negotiate. And that's fine. That's the way it should be within a free-market system. But if we're going to constantly interfere in this process, we can't be surprised when the second and third-order effects don't exactly turn out the way we anticipated, or maybe even intended. Furthermore, I think is pretty insulting to know the farmers in my district that are fighting incredibly hard to keep their farms going. And if we're going to engage in that kind of arrogance toward them, then I would just say this, Mr. Speaker. How about we try this as an exercise? How about all 140 legislators in this building take a season off? And then we'll take 140 corresponding farms and have them take a season off, and see which people our constituents really miss more. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The delegate from Roanoke City, Delegate Rasul.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise for a motion.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move the pending question.
Delegate from Roanoke, Delegate Rasul moves the pending question. Delegate from Roanoke, Delegate Rasul moves the pending question, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. The chairs in doubt, throw your hands up. Y'all yell so loud. Ayes and nays, I guess. Y'all want ayes and nays? Okay, they don't want ayes and nays, the motion carries. I'm looking at, I'm looking at the leader, he kept his hand down, I'm good. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Speaker, turning to page six, House Bill 291 has been taken by for the day. Mr. Speaker, that completes work on the live portion of today's calendar.
Per House Rule 51, the House has returned to the morning hour, does the clerk have any additional announcements or communication?
No communications, just the meetings announcements for this very busy Tuesday afternoon, Wednesday morning here in the third week of session. The Committee on Labor and Commerce will be meeting one half hour after adjournment in House Room A. Then, once the committee is finished, they will, hopefully in the adjournment of the Senate, they're going to have a joint meeting between the House and the Senate Labor and Commerce Committees. Again, House Room A in the lower level. Once the committee, the joint meeting is finished, then the Labor and Commerce Subcommittee Number One will be meeting, again in House Room A sometime later this afternoon, and then once Subcommittee One of Labor and Commerce is finished, then Subcommittee Number Three. So Commerce and Labor, joint meeting, and then two subcommittees of Labor and Commerce over in House Room A. For the Committee on General Laws, they're going to meet a half hour after adjournment in House Committee Room B, on the second floor of the GAB, and once they are finished, they're meeting a half hour after adjournment. Once that Subcommittee's finished, the ABC Gaming Subcommittee will meet in House Room B, and then once they are finished, or two hours after adjournment, Subcommittee on Procurement and Open Government will be meeting. So General Laws and two of its subcommittees will be meeting as well this afternoon at 4 o'clock. The Finance Committee, Subcommittee Number Two, they'll be meeting at 4 in the House North Subcommittee Room on the second floor of the GAB. Also at 4 o'clock, Education's K-12 Subcommittee, they'll be meeting in House Committee Room C on the other end of the second floor of the GAB. And then finally, the Conservative Caucus is meeting at 4:30 in House Subcommittee Room Nine up on the ninth floor. Looking ahead to tomorrow, Wednesday, January 24, Speaker's Interfaith Devotion will be meeting at 7:00 a.m. in the Speaker's Conference Room up on the 14th floor of the GAB. At 7:30, the Hampton Roads Caucus is meeting, they'll be on the seventh floor, House South Subcommittee Room, Hampton Roads Caucus, 7:30. League of Women Voters Caucus is meeting at 8, they'll be on the seventh floor, North Meeting Room, over on the seventh floor of their GAB. And the Military Veterans Caucus will be meeting at 8:00 a.m., but they will be in the Extension Senate Room Three here in the Capitol. So those are several caucuses and whatnot. Mr. Speaker, legislative meeting-wise, Committee on Privileged Elections Campaign Finance Committee, they'll be meeting bright and early at 7:00 a.m. tomorrow in the House North Subcommittee Room on the second floor of the GAB. CTI's Technology Innovation Subcommittee will be meeting at 7:30. They will be in the House Subcommittee Room on the second floor. Communications Technology Innovations, Technology Innovation Subcommittee, meeting at 7:30, House South Subcommittee Room. ACNR's Natural Resources Sub at 7:30 tomorrow, they'll be in House Committee Room B. Then, once the Subcommittee's finishing, the Full Committee on Agriculture, Chesapeake Natural Resources at 9 o'clock, they'll be in the House Committee Room B. At 8 o'clock, going back slightly in time, Committee on Education will be meeting in House Room A in the lower level, 8 o'clock, Full Committee on Education, and once they're finished, the Early Childhood Subcommittee will be meeting upon adjournment, the Full Committee, again in House Room A at 10 o'clock tomorrow. Appropriations, Higher Ed Subcommittee will be meeting up on the 12th floor Appropriations Room, that's at 10 o'clock for Approps, Higher Ed Sub. And then, after all that, everyone goes to caucus, Democrats will go at 11 a.m. in House Room One, Republicans at 11:30 in House Room Two. Mr. Speaker, check the meeting schedule for any changes of that, but that's all the announcements I have at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The delegate from Prince William, Delegate Torian.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise for a point of personal privilege, please.
The delegate wishes to move to the fourth morning hour for a point of personal privilege.
Maybe return to the morning hour for the purpose of a point of personal privilege, thank you.
The delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, what I'm about to share is not meant to offend anyone. For 35 years of my life, I have been a clergy person. Fifteen of those years has been in this space here, and I've always tried, when I have been invited to stand behind that desk, to offer up the appropriate prayer for this body. So not to be offensive to anyone, but to say to my colleagues, when we are inviting clergy to come to be guests in this space, they are guests to us, and I find it rather offensive when they, guests become partisan and begin to make statements that can be offensive to each of my colleagues in this house. So I would ask, Mr. Speaker, as we are inviting clergy to come to this space, that their partisanship, their offensiveness remain with them, and that they will offer up a prayer that would be encouraging and uplifting to us and our families as we seek to do the people's business. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Mr. Speaker, I move that when the House adjourns today, adjourn to reconvening tomorrow at 12 noon.
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring moves that when the House adjourns today, adjourn to reconvening tomorrow at 12 noon. As many as favor, the motion will say aye, those opposed, no. Motion is agreed to. Thank y'all. The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the House do not adjourn.
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring moves that the House do not adjourn, as many as favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no, the motion is agreed to, the House stands adjourned until tomorrow at noon. Now, bring it on.